Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, August the 22nd, 2016. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Terry Martinson, Golden Hill Seventh Day Advantage Church, 3005 Golden Boulevard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here and to be a part of, of the business of our community. Thank you for each person who has an interest and, and is taking the time to, to be a part of this event this evening. Lord, I thank you for the many servicemen and women who live in our community and pray that you would give them safety in, in our servicemen and women throughout the world. And Lord, I ask that tonight you would give each person wisdom, give each person the ability to articulate clearly and please make the, the best decisions that can be made for, for our community. Thank you, Lord, that you have promised that you will always be with us. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Terry. Second item on the agenda, Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Modrie.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chamber. Item 3, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Councilman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilman Blood. Any questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C would be under consent. Item 4, approval of claims, also under consent. Item number 5, special presentation. 5A, overview of the needs assessment study on the library. Our library director, Julie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening Mayor Sanders and council members. I am Julie Denville, the Director of the Bellevue Public Library. Tonight, library consultant George Lawson of Ames, Iowa is going to present just an overview of our facility needs study that he completed for the library. He's been involved with libraries for 41 years, 17 as a practicing librarian, and 24 years as a building consultant. Over the years, he's worked on many projects in Nebraska and over 450 in 14 states. So he comes to us with a lot of expertise. As you may recall, in January 2015, conducting a study was part of the city's 2015-2017 strategic plan. At that time, we didn't immediately have the funds to go forward, but with the help of a donation from the Bellevue Library Foundation of $7,500, a generous donation of $3,000 from the community betterment funds, and then with monies from the library's budget, we have been able to afford this study this year. We are pleased to see many of our library board members, foundation members, friends of the library, and just community members who have an interest in the library be present with us this evening, understanding how important this initial step is for the future of the library. We have been providing services to this community for over 87 years, 40 of them at the current site. Last year, over 150 patron visits were made to the library. So I think we're a very vital part of this community. We believe with your commitment and vision, we can continue to be a vital part of the community going into the future. And I'm going to have Mr. Lawson come up right now. Thank you.
I'm very glad to meet with you this evening and I have good news, not so good news, and then better news. We'll end on a high note. Part of the good news is that you have a very able and knowledgeable staff that are really committed to public service. I work with a lot of different libraries and you can tell when you meet an organization where the, the staff is really committed to quality public service and you have that with your director and library staff. And you have an informed and engaged library board, foundation, and friends. You know, when, when you look at the, the cover sheet of our, our study, it says, prepared with the assistance of George Lawson Library Planner. This is really their report and I, we, they were active participants in worksheets and work sessions and, and were really committed to moving this project forward. The not so good news is, as Julie said, your building is 40, 41 years old. It was originally planned when Bellevue's population was under 24,000. And right now, we're at, what, 54,000 and counting. Working with Mr. Schuchak, I got some good population projections and, you know, our, our planning horizon is 2040. We try, and we're not planning for tomorrow or it'd be wrong. We're looking 25 years out. And the planning population would be 68,000. The building's systems are wearing out. Pick one, the roof, the mechanical systems, the electrical systems. You know, yesterday, the power was out. One of my visits, they had a children's waiting pool to catch the, the roof leaks. A bucket wasn't enough, a children's waiting pool was required. And I think on two of my three visits, the AC has been out. But you know all that because you hear these reports. But more important, those things can be fixed, but the library wasn't designed for 21st century library services. And you have some very good examples in the metropolitan area of libraries that have looked to the future and, and updated their systems. One, one library that I, I know that you're very familiar with is the new Dew Space, which is a library, it just doesn't have all the books. Doesn't have any. And one of the interesting things I found about your library, over a third of the holdings of your library are digitally downloadable, the eBooks, download audiobooks, all through their gateway webpage, so over a third of their materials. But people still value hard copy materials, so it's not one or the other, it's both. 93% of their loans are hard copy even with a third of their collection available digitally. So people read. The building is now 21,000 square feet. And one of the things that is included in this excerpt is that we might need as much as 53,000 square feet. A lot of the services that people work to public libraries for today weren't even anticipated when this library was built 41 years ago. And there's a whole section in this, in this excerpt, but it also included in the main report, pages 3 to 5, talks about some of the many changing service elements that are expected at public libraries. Your library building has two feet firmly planted in the 1970s. The ambience, the architecture, the lock. I, I went through all that when the energy crisis was on, people didn't think they could have any windows, any connection to the out of doors. You know, window systems have become very energy efficient and that's one of the things that people crave is natural light in their library. The furnishings, the furniture, the data, electrical, cabling, the energy plan, that Americans with disabilities, there's only one, one single restroom that's available for people with disabilities in the library. So there's 50 pages there that talk about some of the issues with the building. You're familiar with it, you can go down and look, I'm sure you have. But the better news is, you really couldn't have picked a better time to think about improvements to your public library. Library services have changed dramatically and for the better. They're really places for people to come together and share and create information as well as to take materials home. Public libraries, the closest the city government comes to retail. Do we have any council members that are involved in retail? Well, if you, if you hadn't done anything with your, your facility in 41 years and were running a retail operation, yeah, you'd be in trouble. Libraries, when you make major improvements to your library, it's sort of like that, that movie Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come. The typical return on investment, so to speak, when you make improvements, whether it's an addition or renovations or all new construction, is that library use increases somewhere between 35 and 50%. And I'm, I'm willing to bet some piece of my fee that your use would increase that 50% end of the spectrum. And that's not a one-time spike, that's a permanent increase in the base. So those 150,000 visitors that Julie was talking about, that's a really critical element to comment on. You know, libraries are important because they're an important quality of life measure for a community. And in a metropolitan area like you live in, you know, Bellevue is in competition with many of its neighbors like Papillion, Gretna, Elkhorn, La Vista, Omaha, for retail, for businesses, for new residents. And one of the things that people look at is what, what kind of public library do we have in our community? It's those 150,000, excuse me, almost 160,000 visitors per year, it, it means that the library is a trip generator. It's almost like an anchor, anchor retail provider at a shopping mall. It's like a new Von Mauer. It, it brings people into your community. So the thing I guess I'd like to leave you with is, you know, the case for need is pretty quick cut. The road to making it happen, I know, is, is the more difficult challenge. I've worked on, as Julie mentioned, many library projects and the day has passed where it's expected that the city would fund entirely a project like this, knowing smiles. Projects of this type are funded from many pockets, private giving, corporate donations, foundations. A whole lot of pockets need to, to come together to make this happen. And right now, we've got a study that says, yeah, you got a need. And that's where you have to start. But to move this project forward, the next step is to look at possible solutions. And you need a design team, architects and engineers, to look at, well, what are our options and to evaluate those carefully because there isn't just one solution, there's a number of solutions. Are we going to stay at the existing location, add on and renovate? That's a possibility. Do we want to go to a whole new site that has maybe some different advantages and build all new? Do you want to go to an existing building that's available of size and scope that might be appropriate and do adaptive reuse? And that seems to me the city's involved in some kind of a project similar to that right now. And that's a good solution. The only way to know what the best answer is, is to identify those solutions, have careful examination of those, test those solutions, hold up the results, and make that an open process for the entire community to look at, for you to be involved with, and say, well, clearly, the data shows that this is the best solution and let's move forward. So what questions can I answer for you this evening?
I just wanted to thank you because when you appeared before us last time, we had asked that you look at some of those options of partnerships. And I appreciated that you included that. And we asked for it to be very thorough and comprehensive, and I cannot argue with that. It's very thorough, it's very comprehensive. It's a very good study. So I just want to personally thank you.
Well, I-
And the staff who all worked with you because we, we identified correctly too, that they put a lot of time-
I have a soft spot for Bellevue. I've known Lupe for many years and worked in this area and, you know, you're ready to move forward and I want to help you. You know, having a study that sits on the shelf does no good, so thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Lawson? I want to thank you for your time and your expertise and same with Julie, your, under your direction, thank you. And to the friends of the board and the friends of the library, thank you so much.
We had a whole bus come down tonight.
You sure did and I appreciate you all coming out. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, liquor license. 6A, Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart. Special designated liquor license application to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a sampling tasting at Daniel Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, on November 18th, 2016, from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Welcome. We're going to give them just a minute to go ahead and leave. There's anybody else that would like to leave, now's a good time. And we'll settle right back in. Again, thank you all for coming out this evening. Okay, I think we're good.
Evening. My name's Jim Subject. I'm the manager of Cornhusker Beverage Mart. Have been the manager almost 50 years now. This will be a fundraiser that we're having at Daniel Gross High School. It's the 20th year we put on the, the same type of fundraiser for them. It's a wine tasting where we actually have measured pours into the glasses. We, we're very cognizant of not letting anybody over, overindulge. It brings community to get together and there's also some funds raised for Gross High School at the same time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for this application for Willow Springs Bottling Company, doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, for this special designated liquor license application to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits during a sampling tasting at Daniel Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, 43rd Street, on November 18th, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Modrie.
Thank you Mayor. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting from, on agenda items 6A through 6C for religious and personal reasons.
Please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 6B, Fraternal Order of Eagles, 3912, doing business as Bellevue Eagles. Special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and, beer, wine during a dance and beer garden behind the club at 209 West Mission Avenue on October 1st, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. till 11:00 p.m. Is there anyone here with the Eagles Club? I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item at this time, please do so. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Preister.
Thank you Mayor. I would like to make a motion to recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission approval for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 3912, doing business as Bellevue Eagles, for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine during a dance and beer garden behind the club at 209 West Mission Avenue on October 1st, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second. Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Councilman Blood.
Yes Mayor, I'm hoping that somebody from the city can remind the Eagles that quite often Bellevue Little Theater is interrupted by the music. Not to ask them to stop having fun or playing the music, that, just that they be courteous to their neighbors. And they have done so before and we've requested it, so I just want to put that out there. It's a wonderful thing to have in Old Town, but they do have neighbors and they're going to be playing music till 11 o'clock at night.
Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item 6C, Brian Miller for St. Mary's School, special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine during a fundraiser at St. Mary's School, 903 West Mission Avenue, on October 7th, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you. This will be our third annual St. Mary's Trivia Night that we host there at the school for the parents, basically to just try to raise some extra money for the, the school, home and school board.
Okay, I'll open for public hearing at this time. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Blood.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for St. Mary's School and the special designated liquor license to sell beer and wine during a fundraiser at St. Mary's School located at 903 West Mission Avenue on October 7th, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, ordinance number 3856. Adoption of amended budget statement. Mr. Cook.
Thank you Mayor. I'll make a motion that we postpone it till our next meeting on September 12th, 2016.
Second. Second. Second by Councilman Blood. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eight, none. Item nine, ordinance for adoption, for introduction, first reading, ordinance number 3857. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3857. An ordinance to amend Section 12-36.1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Bellevue Fire Prevention Code. To repeal Section 12-36.1 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing. To provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing is scheduled for September the 12th. Item 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 10A, show cause hearing on the proposed condemnation of structure located at 7801 South 30th Street. Mr. Co-
Christensen.
Mr. Christensen.
Good evening Mayor Sanders and council members. I have a short video I'd like to show you of the inside and then I'll answer any questions The structure initially suffered damage on 11 of 2015 and, and basically has been sitting in this condition since that timeframe. Shortly after the fire, or there, there was a tarp that was on side that was removed or weathered out and it's been open to the elements ever since then. When you enter the home, it's just a, like walking into a wall of mildew because of being open to the elements for so long. This is the area on the first floor around the fireplace where the fire, I believe, occurred. You can see all the floorboards are all wet, that's the subfloor, there's another floor on top of that. Those have all been saturated. So basically, in the areas where there's not charred wood, it's all smoke damage, all the drywall, et cetera, would have to be removed down to the bare studs. Most of the debris is just still left in place since January of 2015. This is the area where it's basically open to the outside elements, all the rain, snow, Again, if you look at the rafters on this side, visibly charred and would have to be removed also in order to repair it, that's not visible from the outside. And we're about to the end of this.
Thank you Mike, the video really does help the rest of us to see.
Happy to answer any questions?
Councilman Blood.
Yeah, I was just going to concur with what the mayor said. It makes it so much easier when you, I mean, we go and we look at it, but people tend to question why we vote how we vote. Please keep doing these videos because it makes it so much easier when we're here in the chambers to be able to say why we need to condemn a building. I mean, that's pretty blatant. So thank you for doing that, keep doing that please.
Mr. Modrie.
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, Mike, what has been the contact with the, the owner and, and their feedback?
After the fire, we basically kind of sat back waiting for the property to be repaired, you know, settle up with insurance companies, et cetera. And then some complaints started coming in in the spring of this year, so we went out and visited the property, ended up placarding it, sent a certified letter out. He called, said he had a buyer that was going to buy the house or the structure and the land and tear down the house. And my understanding is that deal has fallen through. And we haven't heard, well, we've heard from him the last couple of days, but just over concerns of being on the agenda for demolition.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you Mayor. Mike, this is a, a nice old farmhouse, one of the old ones in the area that ashamed to lose the quality of the structure. And yet, I don't know that it could even be, I mean, with the seriousness of the damage compounded by the snow, we just had a three-inch rain here a month ago, all that water damage, is it even possible to do anything with it?
I mean, if you tore that structure down to the bare bones and down to the subfloors and treated everything, you know, Clorox and Kils and tried to isolate all the mold and mildew that's possibly growing between the floors, I mean, it's quite an undertaking to bring that back.
Pretty expensive.
Yes.
Cheaper to tear it down and build new, probably.
The cost would probably, you know, outweigh itself as a new home, I would, I would presume.
And you said you just had in the last couple of days contact, but nothing new, no plans, no anything?
The owner thought he had another gentleman that was interested and I spoke with him today and I don't believe he showed up. He may be here tonight, but after speaking with him, I think he was more interested in the land than he was the structure.
And, that's all, thank you.
I'll go ahead and open for public hearing now at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. It is a show cause hearing. Looks like we do have someone here.
And you know, it just, it's just a bad eyesore in the neighborhood, and, and we have a real nice neighborhood.
It is.
We all take care of our neighborhood.
Right.
And this is a real bad sore eye as you drive in to see it, and that's the only way in and the only way out.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to say anything for or against? See none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash eighteen.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten B, public hearing request for conditional use permit to operate family childcare home two at seven six two two, South Forty-first Street. Applicant Josephina Bonilla.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Fernando Mulgar, um, my mother's son, and, uh, she's applying for the second, uh, child care, I mean, family care home two, and she's here to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? See none, I'll open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I don't see anyone. I'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this conditional use permit to operate a family child daycare home at two, let me rephrase that, a family childcare home two at seventy-six twenty-two, South Forty-first Street. And the applicant, Josephina Bonilla, sorry.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Modery. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, you're welcome. Item eleven resolutions, eleven A, resolution twenty sixteen dash seventeen, amending the master fee schedule to include the newly adopted material improvement program fees. Mr. Sullivan?
Okay, two things. There was some concern, um, in regard to whether that would be charged every time a building permit was taken out. In the actual ordinance, we have a provision in there, uh, I didn't catch this, uh, or should say Jeff showed it to me after the meeting. Uh, such fees shall be collected in full at the time that the first building permit for a primary structure is issued for a lot or tax lot. That resolves that. And then, uh, I have included in your packet, um, a red line. Um, one other thing that, uh, Jeff had caught is under number one. We had that at point seven five percent on agricultural construction as well, and that should be fifteen hundred. Um, and then, we did the townhomes and the duplexes as per living unit on charges, and so if all those are acceptable, um, I believe we have the motion, the resolution, was it, uh, already on the table? I believe it was.
Adopted.
So, and then we made a motion to amend, which didn't pass, so then I would now ask if you're comfortable with that, uh, to, uh, do a motion to amend, uh, consistent with those changes you see before you.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Preister.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'll jump in. Uh, the motion would be to approve amending the master fee schedule with the amendments, or first I make the motion and then we would have the amended version, right?
Right, we're gonna, you're gonna, we already have the motion on the table, the original resolution, so now this would be to, um, amend the resolution by making these changes.
Okay, so with it on the table, I'll make the motion to do the amending with the changes that are redlined in our packet and available to the public.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is four to two.
Thank you.
Now we'll need a mo- Now, vote on the, uh, motion as amended, the resolution as amended.
Just the vote.
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven B, resolution twenty sixteen dash nineteen, agreeing to financially support the recreation, recreational trails program grant application for the perfect, purpose of extending the North Trail in American Heroes Park to Hayworth Park. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve resolution number two zero one six dash one nine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business, twelve A, B, and C, and D, is under consent agenda. Twelve E, discussion on rescue squad billing. Chief Guido. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Chief, it was pointed out at the last meeting that you do, in every administrative report, administrator's report, um, put in what the billing is for the month.
That's correct.
Can you tell me how long you've been doing that?
Uh, probably over a year.
So for well over a year, that's been public information that you put out at, twice a month?
I believe so.
Okay, so-
I, I don't have the exact timeframe, but-
But it's available-
For quite some time.
For all citizens to view in the packet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any questions from the council? See none, thank you. Item twelve F, approval of the low responsive, responsible bid from Anderson Excavating Company in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars for the Sorenson Park Pool demolition project, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Councilwoman Bu- Blood.
A motion to approve in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars, and for the mayor to sign the contract.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, approval of the low responsive, responsible bid from the T.A.B. Construction in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Council, uh, Councilman Mike, Carmichael.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of a low responsive, responsible bid for TAB Construction in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents for the two thousand and sixteen concrete projects for advanced construction, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, discussion and approval of the proposed Bellevue Neighborhood Grant Program. Councilwoman, well, Blood. Councilwoman Blood.
Close enough. Um, we took in the information and the concerns that were shared at the council meeting and via email. It's been very simplified. Uh, it's been done by legal, it's comparable actually to the program that Omaha has done successfully for many years. Um, if there aren't any questions or concerns, I'd actually like to make the motion that we approve the proposed Bellevue Neighborhood Grant Program.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one, motion carries.
Thank you. Twelve I, approval and ratification of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Command Staff Association, F.O.B., Lodge fifty-nine. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve and ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Police Command Staff Association, Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge fifty-nine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve J, approval of the annual service agreement and E verifi addendum with vertra for the continued maintenance and service of the police simulator in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be paid from federal forfeiture money. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the annual service agreement and E verifi addendum with vertra for the continued maintenance and service of the police simulator in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be paid from federal forfeiture money.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, organizational matters. Thirteen A, city administrators' removal of office. Councilwoman Blood.
Uh, yes, Mayor, since we have had several H.R. questions that are going to come up prior to the vote, I move that for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individual that we go into executive's dis- I cannot talk tonight, I move to go into executive session to discuss specific H.R. questions that pertain to thirteen A, city administrator removal of office.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now seven forty-five, and we'll go into executive session where our discussion will be restricted to as stated by Councilwoman Blood. I need a motion to return from executive session. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move we return to regular session.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Discussion questions? See none, please vote. You missing someone?
All voted yes.
Thank you. Moving on with item number thirteen, organizational matters. Thirteen A, city administrators' ru- removal from office. Before we make the motion, I have a statement I would like to read. This has been a very trying time and very trying issue for all of us in the City of Bellevue. Not just me, but the citizens of this great city, the administration, and the council. The reactions have run the gamut from shock, disappointment, and embarrassment for the City of Bellevue. However, with that said, keeping emotions out of my recommendation and sticking to the facts and what is right for the City of Bellevue. I have always had the city's best interests in mind, and I have worked hard to do what is right, and five years ago, I asked the council to approve Mr. Burlowitz as our city administrator. It has been an interesting five years filled with ups and downs, but always moving forward. We have worked as a team, receiving personal awards and citywide recognitions. We have worked as a team, and Mr. Burlitz have had worked, and we've had your back. You worked hard for the city and you were paid accordingly. This allowed your talents to be used for doing what is right for the city. But on June twenty-first, twenty sixteen, you caused a situation all on your own, and we are left having to make a decision on your career here today. Looking at only evidence and what is right for the city to move forward is to ask the council for your removal. For just cause, could, and I believe would, cost the city and taxpayers dealing with this issue for many more months and possibly years. For reasons other than just cause, uh, also comes out at a cost, but allows us and the city to move forward from here on. So therefore, I am asking the council to approve removal of Dan Burlowitz as our city administrator for reasons other than just cause. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Was second by Mr. Cook. Any discussions or questions? Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a very difficult situation. I know I've gone to my heavenly Father in prayer for quite a while. I hope that Mr. Burlowitz and Dr. Smith will do the same, see it in their hearts, arrive at reconciliation towards each other and healing, and members of the city will also do the same, forgive, reconcile, and move forward.
Are there any more discussions or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you to the citizens and to the council. Item number fourteen, administrators' report, comments must be limited, limited to the items on the current administration report. Are there any questions for the administration report? See none. Item number fifteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official, employee, or member of the general public. And City Code, section two dash six eight, regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall le- limit their presentation to five minutes.
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. Last time I spoke, I talked about Paul Harvey's, what he said on his, uh, uh, radio program about, uh, police officers. I think still everybody should listen to that. Also talked about the book War and Cops, which I think everybody should read also. I'm not going to say anything about the rescue squad billing tonight, because we had a death in the family, and, uh, I've been, it's been pretty stressful for our, my whole family, so I will just wait till a couple more weeks and get all the information I need, and I'll talk at that time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I, I will be short and sweet. I would like to comment on the Harville Overly, and my name is Lynn Patrick, and this is what I call my drive-by. I did this, the observation, driving by. I would like to compliment both Western Engineering and Swain. Came in with adequate manpower, equipment, and the peoples appeared very knowledgeable, got the job done, it was cleaned up in a very expeditious fashion. You don't see it often, and I would just like to compliment any and everybody associated with that. And I have called previously and complimented the public works. I think the gentleman's name was Dean Dunn, but I thought while I was here on another matter, I'd make it public, because as I say, it doesn't happen often.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
And members of the city will also do the same. Forgive, reconcile, and move forward.
Are there any more discussions or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you to the citizens and to the council. Item number fourteen, administrator's report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current administration report. Are there any questions for the administration report? See none. Item number fifteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official, employee, or member of the general public. And City Code, section two dash six eight, regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. Last time I spoke, I talked about Paul Harvey, what he said on his radio program about police officers. I think still everybody should listen to that. Also talked about the book War and Cops, which I think everybody should read also. I'm not going to say anything about the rescue squad billing tonight because we had a death in the family and I've been, it's been pretty stressful for my whole family. So I will just wait till a couple more weeks and get all the information I need and I'll talk at that time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I will be short and sweet. I would like to comment on the Harville overlay and my name is Lynn Patrick. And this is what I call my drive-by. I did this, the observation driving by. I would like to compliment both Western Engineering and Swain. Came in with adequate manpower, equipment, and the peoples appeared very knowledgeable. Got the job done. It was cleaned up in a very expeditious fashion. You don't see it often and I would just like to compliment any and everybody associated with that. And I have called previously and complimented the public works. I think the gentleman's name was Dean Dunn. But I thought while I was here on another matter, I'd make it public because, as they say, it doesn't happen often.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Thank you.
Are there others? See none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Item number sixteen, we need to go back into executive session. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. For the protection of the public interest and for the needless prevention and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individual, I move we go into executive session to discuss property negotiations in the L B eight forty area.
Second. We have a second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It is now seven twenty. Will we go into executive session as stated by Mr. Cook?